You can have a look at what's happening later if you cannot catch up. Before Lim, I hand over the floor to you. Let me do a quick announcement. I'm going to the e-learning page. Okay, you should see in front of you this e-learning page. Hover over to final assessment, final assessment. See, Conny. Now, Lim, for your information, our class, my class this time around is forty-two packs at least. I haven't checked G S M S on the final finalized figure yet, but the last time I checked is forty-two. So that's why I think you remember our last assessment, right? Everyone has to present. So if with forty-two packs, meaning I have to split the session. Even 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 more session, last time your session is two session, I think. I only have to split this. Yeah. So guys, to the rest of you, please go and answer this question survey form. I need to know when are you free because there are four sessions. I need to separate your name list right now. Let me know also whether you prefer to present physical or online. So that I can schedule it properly. And then yours will, I will announce the list of presentation. Thank you, Yujia. I think you're finished already. So I will announce the list of presentation slots plus the instruction for presentation in one to two weeks' time. As soon as possible, so you can start preparing. Okay, let me stop sharing. Lim, the floor is yours. Guys, let me remind everyone, take the opportunity to ask questions, to learn as much as possible. You know what what happened last week with Kasey. Lim, I brought in a counselor, Kasey, a good friend. And the class asked very active questions, a lot of them. So you know what to do, guys. Ask away, take it as an opportunity to learn. So Lim, over to you.
Okay. Okay, let me try to share my screen first. Yeah, first of all, good evening, Dr. Doria and all my fellow friends here. And I'm I'm so lucky, no, we, I I have so many, you know, all of you here. And one of my classmates from from my current university, she is also here to give me support. Yeah, so yeah, there's one overseas participant here and.
Can you introduce yourself? Which one are you?
And okay, Sophie, I think.
Hi, Sophie, welcome to my class. Hope you enjoy your our session this afternoon.
Yeah, Sophie, maybe she's a little bit shy. So so never mind, I just let her alone. Okay, and then let me try to share my screen. And yeah, I I see some of you switch on your your camera, which I I think is really good. But in the end, I might ask you guys to show off your face to me because I want to know who are here. But now, if you don't feel convenient, I cannot just not, you can just maintain like switch off your camera. But I hope you guys are listening instead of doing something by your own. And I believe you won't. So yeah, and I will ask you question. So don't just listen, please take some notes because I like to ask question as usual. So Dr. Dora knows me very well. I ask question almost every class. So later, I also will ask you guys question, okay? So please be more active to maybe respond to me. But I heard Dr. R say like last week, you guys are actively participated in the talk. So yeah, I I think maybe this week you guys will do the same as well. Okay, and first of all, I really glad to have Dr. Doria as my lecturer in U T M for past semesters. So for my first semester, second semester, and then third semester, I I find I request. Because of the Dora, can you be my supervisor for the RS one and now RS two? So yeah, I'm working with, I've been working with Dr. Dora since my my first semester in U T M. And this is my fourth semester, the second year. So and you guys are lucky. So you you guys are lucky to have Dr. Doria as your lecturer. So please grab all the opportunity and chance, okay? Learn from doctor. So doctor, you raise your hand or no?
Sorry, wrong clicking, I'm looking for reaction back to nature.
Okay, never mind. Let me share my screen and show the P P T. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, it's clear.
Okay, so if you have question in the middle, you please just know you can ask in the checkbox. If I didn't see that, maybe someone can let me know. Or you can also switch on your microphone, you know, you can ask me question. I I like to have interaction within the within the talk. You don't have to know wait until the last accu-exception if you really want to ask. And if you like, you find a little bit difficult to follow my my path, maybe I too quick, too soft. I talk too soft or I talk too quick, you can just let me know. Or even you don't understand, you can just let me know. I will try to translate. You want Mandarin, Basra, Malaysia, also Cantonese, Hukkien, whatever language I can try to accommodate. Okay, and a little bit of Korean as well. So no problem, language is not a problem, it's not a problem for all of us here. Okay, so my today I'm going to share about arts and humanities education. So later on, I will try to introduce what is it about, what it is about arts education to me, okay? To my to my knowledge, try to share everything with you guys. So me, okay, this I will go through like some of the contents here. And then, okay, about me, hmm, simply, I think education is very important. That's why I choose to further my master degree in U T M for the Master of Education in Management and Administration. Because I think education, it can equip nurture next generation. And my as a as a as a as a dance dance background people, person. I think arts embrace human with unique perspectives. And so if I combine education and my background arts discipline. So arts education, it change human, it change the society and also can change the world. Even though we might not think, some people might not may not think about that, but yeah, it could be, okay? So I'm now currently an arts education practitioner. And yeah, this is the latest photo of me. Okay, and then, okay, about my education background, you can see that I'm actually a dance. No, I I started my my dance degree in two thousand four. And then I obtained a bachelor of my art honors dance degree in Hong Kong, the Academy for Performing Arts. So my majoring is actually contemporary dance. So after a very, very long journey and I slightly shift my paradigm into education. So you can see after or during, maybe during the pandemic COVID nineteen, I started my Master of Education at U T M. Okay, then as most of you here, my major is in management and administration. And then suddenly, not suddenly, in two thousand twenty-two, I I I think maybe after I know I started the course in U T M. I found that I'm really interested about education, about the academic study of education. And I would like to explore more. And I hope I can connect, somehow connect my my own background and education. That's why I choose these these Graduate Institute of Arts and Humanities Education in Taipei National University of the Arts, which I'm located now. And this is my classroom, as I mentioned to doctor just now. This classroom is my my program, we use this classroom at most of the time. So that means I'm currently doing both master degree at the same time for almost two semester. And yeah, this is my education pathway, okay? And then, okay, I think work work experience, I can share more. And you guys can 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 have a have a look, later you can have a look as well. So I think experiences that we are encountering now or then mean something to our future engagement. Like, you know, when I started my dance degree and then after that, upon graduation, I get into this. How get dance field of Taiwan and then my career is professional dancer. After that, I proceed to South Korea for this residency artist program. So I stayed there, the first project, I stayed there for six months. This is a cultural partnership initiative program, which is a very big exchange program for over, I think, around eighty countries, more than two hundred participants from every discipline, arts or maybe tourism or maybe literature, music, so on and so forth. So around two hundred something participants. And then the second time is like, you know, narrow narrowing down to my 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 profession. The second project, which I also happen in South Korea, is costing of movement project. This is the this is a cross-disciplinary arts residency project, which I work with artists, musicians from Asia and Europe, we stay there for four weeks, one month. And then we we produce our performances there, okay? And then after that, I I I back to my own country, Malaysia. So I started to try to transform my knowledge and also my my profession as an artist, right? And how can I educate people? How can I deliver my professions and my knowledge to the children or to the teenagers in Malaysia? So I started as a dance teacher in the primary and secondary school. And then I teaching contemporary dance because as you can see just now, my major is contemporary dance. And then because I started Chinese dance before I went abroad, I started in my secondary school. So I also teach Chinese dance and also ballet. Ballet is my minor when I study in Hong Kong. So I become an artist teacher since two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-two, before I depart from Malaysia to Taiwan. So you can find it, why I'm, what I'm, well, just now I mentioned, it could mean something to our future engagement. We don't know like what what we doing now. It might somehow reflect to our future engagement, right? So this mean we need to like really, if you want to work in this now, your profession, you are a teacher, right? Or you are like somebody in your industry, you really need to put in effort. So that it could it could be, it could be something means a lot to you in the future. Yeah, so this is just my little little feelings, okay? And experience to share with you guys. And now you can see me, my photo, this is, oh, this is in the career, the second time, just now I mentioned to you. The second time, the costing of movement project, so we stay in the Jeju Island. And you see this first photo here? This is the performance venue. Can you imagine we dance here? And then this is sea, it's really a big ocean over there. And then all this is the participants from France, from Spain, and then from the U S A and the Korean and me Malaysian. So yeah, we are one of the team here, director, no, technical director, artist director, translator, manager. So we stay together in South, in the Jeju Island, okay? Also, this is me, if you couldn't recognize, okay, this is me. Okay, and then you can see, yeah, this is a performance video. So we perform on here in the very north, above the stone rock all over the place. And then, yeah, so this is my, okay, the reason why I only choose this photo to show you guys because I want to let everyone know, performance or dance, that it not supposed only be on stage, on the hall, on the so-called grand theater, the performance venue, right? Everywhere, it could be a performance venue, it depends on the art form, the the way the artists they want to showcase themselves. So first of all, when I work in Taiwan, I perform in, I perform in all those grand theater because it's a grand company. So we all we only perform in the theater, in the grand hall, grand ballroom, grand hall. So after I go to the Korea, I started to do something different. So this is more like specific, such specific performances, okay? And okay, there is history, okay? Now we move into the present of of me. So I would like to share my routine now, my current routine, like every day what I'm doing. I think I almost similar to all to some of you here attending classes, right? So and then I'm also just now I mentioned to Dr. Doria, I'm working for a project of aesthetic education. This is a, this is a project where the Taiwan M O E has been running for ten years. They have this fifteen-year project for aesthetic education. So our school, our university have been have been in charge on this particular project for ten years. So now I'm working as a so-called part-timer there, helping a little bit on the administration work. And 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 like, you know, kind of the office boys, I can say, but but also learning something, yeah. And other than that, daytime attending classes and working from maybe ten or nine thirty until five thirty or six thirty. And after that, what should I do? I go back home and sleep or enjoy, but not unfortunately, a master degree student have to read a lot, right? Journals, articles and pieces, and the most importantly, all the assignments and the research we need to do. So basically, I'm staying in the campus until nine or ten P M. Like sometime maybe midnight if necessary, yeah, because I only have the night time to do all this work. And then daytime I'm doing like classes and the working purposes, okay? So I believe everyone were busy when we are working and studying at the same time. I believe all of you here also experience the same thing, maybe you have same routine with me. And then weekend, what what should I do in the weekend? So I think very important as a teacher or now we are a student, right? Or maybe you guys also working as teacher in your in the institution or other schools. It's very important to find this balance between your work and your life. So usually for me, during weekend, I will just know trying to do something different to relax myself, you know, to visiting museum and art galleries. But sometimes visiting museum and art gallery is one of the assignment. If you need to review and rather report because this is a part of my part of my course. And then watching performances, some movies, and then hanging out, regenerating and relaxing. So this is like kind of my routine now. And yeah, so I think until now, you have some understanding about who am I, who I am. So I will proceed with the issue and challenges that during this journey as a teacher or or at the same time as a researcher, as a student, what issues and challenges that we will, we are facing. So I think overcoming difficulties and challenges is a routine as well. Just now I mentioned the routines, like daily routine, right? But then now I found out that overcoming difficulty and challenges is also one of the routine. So this is why I mentioned just now, find the balance, it's very important. Because if you do not know how to find the balance, you might lose your motivation to keep going on. And if you can't find the motivation, it will it will affect your effectiveness as a teacher or as an educator or as an education admin, administration, right? So I think find the balance is also one of the issues or challenges that we need to try to figure out and find and try to find a solution for that. And then these stress ourselves, I I I'm not quite sure about, not everyone, because we handle stretch differently. Like if here, many people have in have been in a very high stress level because very competitive here. So we have high competitive, you have like, you know, for example, for my course, my program here, that every year they have like maybe around sixty people, they want to enroll. But the 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 institute, they only choose, they only admitted fifteen out of sixty. So like not only my 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 institute in our, in this university for especially for dance, for drama, music, and also the fine arts, all those schools, they have very, they are very competitive to can to get into this school, to be admitted to this school. Like, let's say you have over hundred enrolled, that student, they want to enroll. At the end, they maybe choose around thirty, you know, for for the undergraduate program. Yeah, so these stress ourselves very important. And then also maximize our abilities. How, what is it about maximize our abilities? I think most of us have some experiences like, for example, you can, some, maybe your colleague, let's say your colleague or 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 your or your classmates, they have abilities like can do many things. But they choose to minimize their abilities. Why? Because if you have, if you show people less ability, then you can do less, right? Some people, they have this kind of mindset or thinking, they don't want to 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 do more. And maybe like, for example, being a teacher is just one of the job, one of the way they can survive in this society, right? They just can earn money. But then as an educator, I think we always need to think beyond that, yeah. So if you have these abilities to do more thing, to execute more task, why don't you try? Why don't you want to just minimize yourself? Because you can actually overcoming these difficulties, you can overcoming the challenges. And then you can like get something different, maybe some different experiences, maybe some different engagement. And then who knows if we are influence or affect your future engagement, which I mentioned just now earlier, okay? And the last one, I think this one is quite a big challenges to sustain our passion in our so-called working environment. I I know, as I know, some some people or some teacher, they have been working for so, so, so many years. Maybe they are waiting for their retirement, so they don't have much much passion to work to be an effective and a qualified teacher. Yeah, they're just waiting the time, when the time come and then they can retire. Like like so-called a very, as a very complete, you know, complete their 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 life, so-called things like that. But I think even though I have I have met some, I have met some lecturer or maybe teacher, no matter in primary, secondary school or even the university, they are almost at their retired age. But then they show how passionate they are within their work, within their work environment. Yeah, I think this is very important for us to remind ourselves, as a teacher, you have to do that. Because we are, our aim is teach our students, our learners. And this is so, this is like kind of somehow connected to how you're going to manage your student development. You can imagine, if you didn't have passion to teach, if you didn't have much motivation on that work, do you think you can really manage your student development very well? I don't think so, yeah. So these four issues, it's like, no, I I just I list all based on my experiences and based on my observation. I think we all need to like not really overcome it and then it will be something in the future, okay? So now I have a question. Okay, maybe you guys can try to switch on your mic, microphone and answer, give me some answer. What is arts education to you? What it means to you? Anyone? When you heard, just simply, you don't don't afraid, you don't worry about your answer, correct or wrong. There's no such thing, we are sharing ourselves. When you see this word, arts education, what do you think?
Hello, I'm art teacher in China, I teach children painting.
Oh, you are an art teacher, okay, teach children painting. So for you, so for you, arts education, what it is about?
In my opinion, I think our education is not about teach children the skills. Like me, I never teach children painting skills. I think the creativity, thinking and innovation ability, I need to teach teach the children through my art class. Because you know, in the A I, intelligent artificial times where we we don't add the rubber can paint skills is very high. Yeah, so I think the creative thinking is more important than the skills.
Okay, good. And then who else?
Hello.
Hi.
Can anyone see me now? Everyone, okay, I can't see myself. Okay, in my mind, that art education is a kind of education that more, more, more we want to explain about ourselves, this world and what, why we are human and how we can be a human. So it's about emotion and patience that in our mind, it's not from some some other well, where's, but in our mind, with our connect with this world.
Yeah, so for you, the art, the arts education is about the humanities.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then for just now, Liu, is it Liu, just now, Yali.
Connection.
Yeah, Liu is mentioned about the creative thinking is for you, it's like more important than skills when you teach, right? And also, I also saw some of the, you know, other participants, they are typing the checkbox about about emotion, the expression, right? For 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 your feeling and things like that, okay? Very good, thank you for your response and I will keep continuing, okay? So arts education, when we talk about arts education, it basically, I mean, basically, it comprise. It comprise four major forms, okay? The first one, this picture, can can anyone let me know or answer or give me the answer? What is this art form about? This one. Is it a music, dance, drama, literature or anything? What you can think, what is?
Painting and design.
Painting, okay, so when painting on the street, on the staircase, on the environment, it give a visual, right? It visualize you, so we call it visual arts. So painting, drawing and things like that, that can appear in front of your eyes. This we call we so-called visual art, all consisted in that, okay? So this is about visual arts. How about this one? What is this, what do you think? What art form is this? The second picture.
Theater.
Sorry, theater, so so we can, sorry, yeah, theater. So it means it's like drama, right? This is drama, director, these two actors and actor, okay? And then this, obviously, music, right? All the music, not all the all the music, musical, musical icon that, okay? And how about this one? This one, if you are, this this picture at the right top corner, if you have a very good, good eyes, the vision, you can see who is this guy. Okay, so this is, I know also obviously, this is a dance, okay? This is a performance where I where I do, what I did before the pandemic COVID nineteen hit the world, okay? This is a performance where I where I do, what I did before the pandemic COVID nineteen hit the world, okay? And then the reason, the reason that I choose this so-called this picture is because you can see where is this, where's the location? Do you i- is it, is it a a theater, a a grand performance hall for you, yes or no? How do you think, where is this?
Maybe theater, I think.
You think this is theater, uh anyone else? Anyone else, you have different, your different uh idea, what is this, where is it? You can see here, this picture may be slightly uh obvious, this is an outdoor, right?
Public community.
Yeah, it's so-called community, it's a, it, this is just a hundred years like heritage or no, the shop lots. So there's a corner, corner lot. So our performance start from the staircase here. And then also in the end, we end up, this one is the back street of the shop lot, you know? And inside, after you walk up, when you walk up to, we walk, uh we walk up to the venue, it's like, yeah, it's a gallery. It's an open space that we can not do anything here. So dance or maybe music or drama performances, it could be anywhere to anyone, yeah? So this is the main reason and also the main idea that I want to brought. I want to bring to all of you here, yeah? So to break out our so-called common comments um perception on certain arts form, okay? So when we talk about arts education, we talk about these four arts form, okay? And let's moving on. Okay, so about my perspective of arts education. Okay, so uh because I'm I'm I've been told, I've been told by doctor to share like, you know, maybe three case, uh case study. Or maybe three stories, and maybe three ideas, right? So uh so I I I try to um so-called. Um, I think, I I have been thinking about that, you know, what what uh what stories or what case study that I can share to you guys. But in the end, I choose uh I choose these three so-called perspectives of mine. My perspectives towards arts education. Okay, so first, teaching as an creation process. Okay, um, I think most of you, you, when we talk about composition, you know, people compose music, right? We have music composer. And then for maybe drama, we have director. We have the script writer, they write the script for the play, for that play, right? And for dance, maybe we have choreographer, to choreograph the art work, the dance work, so they can perform on the stage. And then for visual art, we have like uh painter, right? We have uh like those artists, they can do a lot of like very uh amazing artworks. They can be showcased in the art gallery, museum, and so on, okay? All those are considered as creation process. But now, we are a teacher. So for you, teaching as an creation process, what is that? Okay, maybe it sounds a little bit um, a little bit fresh maybe to you. So how can we do that? First thing, I think we need to initiate teaching as an creation process. The initiation for everything, uh for every decision or every plan that we are going to um implement. We are going to execute, it's very important, we need to start the initiation first, right? So you have to start think, uh start to think. If let's say today, I walk into the classroom, I teach mathematics, I teach English language, right? Or maybe I teach moral education. So can I treat that process as an creation process? Okay, this is one of the issues that can you think, you can think about. And I move into the second, the 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 second point that I have been wrote down here, I have been written down here. Integrate arts as a medium in teaching, okay? Integrate arts, just now you know all the arts, right? Not all, the four major arts form, visual arts, dance, drama, and music. Have you ever think to integrate those arts form as a medium in your teaching? Let me uh, let me do an example, uh before that, I need to, I know, I need to close the door. Sorry, I need to close, close the door because someone is talking outside, okay? Integrate arts, uh I want to, I want to um share an example to you so that you can maybe uh understand easily. For example, today, I'm I'm um, let's say, I'm an English teacher, right? And then one of the topic, it mentioned about. About uh maybe one of the, one of the uh paragraph, it mentioned, one, one of the article in the textbook. Mentioned about maybe respect. How do we um, if you, if you just based on the book material itself. Maybe you just told your student, yeah, we need to respect who are elderly, because this uh uh very uh common like now. Um common things that we need to know and we need to have this and that, so on and so forth, right? So, could you ever think if you integrate the arts as a medium into this uh section of teaching? What would it be? For example, if let's say, I I choose drama as the medium, okay? So maybe I can just um prepare a script, a very simple script. Like maybe student A say something, or maybe student A, he or she act very rude to their, to his or her parent, right? So maybe they have one one script, and then the 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 parent like another script, okay? And then from the third uh perspective, maybe the the grandpa or or the grandmother, they have another, another uh script. Like try to, try to so-called um correct, correct the choo- the the children. Like like like, show them, oh, this is not right for you to speak so rude to your parent. I mean, you need to have the respect, you didn't know how to respect with elderly and a parent. So when you just draw a small play in the classroom, it might be more interesting. For you to teach and for the student to learn. And it's somehow, it can draw the attention and interest of the student. Because I think they're quite bored about teacher, teaching based on the textbook. So this is one of the example that we integrate arts as a medium. And you can choose like, not only drama, maybe you can choose like um visual arts, things like that. As long as this medium, it could easily and effectively much into your purpose of the lesson. Of that lesson, yeah. So um I can, I can share another example, I think it's also quite interesting. Like, I I have been taking uh, I've been taking a course during this semester. So I'm, we need to go to a a a primary school. That class of student, they are autism children. So this is so-called a special education class. Then we, teaching as an creation process, we use this concept and idea. So we design all the activities, you know, to try to make the student know how to um, how to have the social skill. How can they communicate with their friends and family uh better? As we all know, autism children, they don't like to talk to people. They just keep silence and doing their own thing all the time. So we choose that specific um uh lessons. We try to put in, we integrate arts, for example, drama, music, and dance elements. And then we use it as a medium to design our class, the so-called instructional design. So we design our class and the activities, and if we hope through all those activities, we can teach the children about social skill. About the communication skill, yeah. So um this is uh, this is quite, I think this is quite interesting for me. And I'm still working on that, so I can share a little bit only for you guys. So another one poses the ability to improvise. Usually, we prepare all, like before lesson, during the class, and after class. We we have all those things that we know what to do in our list, correct? So we have the so-called lesson plan. Uh in in the national school, or the teacher, you need to write lesson plan every week, every class, right? So, but that one is just for your reference. Sometimes, if let's say you walk into the classroom, we need to base on the situation, right? Uh the student, maybe some student, they have a bad emotion issues that they. And it might influence all the flow of your teaching. So if you are a teacher, you need to know how to manage your, the student development in all the aspects. Including make sure they have uh motivation and make sure they are, they are uh participation in your class. So you need to have this ability to improvise, because somehow you need to change your plan at the moment, just on the spot. So we call this improvised, because you should know that we have improvised music, right? Improvised music means a DJ just play the board on the spot without any preparation. And for dance people, improvised, maybe I switch on my music, I give you some structural uh instruction. And then you can start improvise yourself, move your body, based on the music floor, the rhythm, and then the melody, that give you what kind of emotion, and start to move your body. So this is improvised for dance. But for the teacher, if you're teaching, if if you uh, if you want to like try about this teaching as an creation process. You need, you also need to have this improvised a skill or ability. For 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 example, I teach a special education uh classes. Every week, all the autism children, this week student A have different, you know, emotion thing bursting. And then next week, that student, I don't know what happened to him or her, he he or she just keep quiet, sitting in the corner. Then she don't want, he or she don't want to participate in the activities. So we as a teacher, we need to know how to improvise, how to, you know, uh change our plan accordingly. Okay, this is one of thing, this is the first thing I would like to share, teaching as an creation process. And then the second one is about the creative learning. So hmm there 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 are four key elements here for the creative learning. We always uh working on divergent thinking, the first is the divergent thinking. We need to developing the imagination skill of our to our students. So we 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 give them something, but we want them to think broadly, broaden their perspective. So developing imagination in order to get to the stage of divergent thinking. And then the second element for creative learning is about experiential learning. So it's about the developing and accumulating experiences. So when the student, they're 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 on, they're they're on this stage, they're developing, accumulating their experiences to doing. So we say learn by doing for experiential learning, right? So they're accumulating everything. This is a one of the very important process to reach to the creative learning. Because when, when, when he or she um are in this, in the experiential learning process, the the stage. It somehow can be uh can stimulate their creative, their creativity. And then more motivation to learn and then uh they can think not differently. And then the motivation, which I mentioned just now, is very important for us as a teacher to our student. We always need to think about motivations. You, we we cannot just stay um in our so-called concept zone, which mean maybe, let's say for me. I teach dance for like uh around fifteen years, fifteen years. So if I, if I just teach like based on what I know and what I'm used to. I might not uh circulate the motivation for my student, right? Because all those things is that, no, aspect that, or or student can be aspect that, can aspect that, I can aspect that. Or what is, what was this teacher going to do the next, for the next, yeah? And then enjoyment is very important during the creative learning process, so um it should be fun. Okay, you you, we we always need to, need to think like um, how can we teach differently? Or how can we teach creatively? In order to reach to the final, uh so-called reach to our, our so-called objective of creative learning. Only when you teach, as a teacher, we teach creatively. And our student, they can uh arrive at the stage of the creative learning, okay? So this is the second thing, and then. So um, I found that, uh just now, I mentioned both two issues, right? Creative learning and then also teaching as an creation process. It actually can be connected to the experiential learning, okay? Learn by doing. So in this theory, I think most of you, and maybe Dr. Dora will cover as well, so I just like simply, you know, list up some points. So it's there that another area where creativity can be promoted. So for creativity, um create uh the create a creative learning process. It could be like really well connected with the experiential learning, and a student learn from doing. They need to um, teacher give some, give some instructions or or give some uh task for the student to do. And then we hope, within that uh process, students find out something. Or student learn something differently, where you didn't mention. This is the purpose of experiential learning, okay? So experiencing, as experiencing, experiencing things in a new way can result in deeper learning. So when they're trying, and then with their think, the divergent thinking, right? So they have motivation to do that. So this whole journey of the experiencing means a lot to the children or the students. And so they can have a deeper learning. Instead of we just told them, like, okay, you need to uh be be respect to elder. If you just mention this statement, you know, same with their textbook. It might not be uh, might not be a, you know, so-called a strong image to them, yeah? So so that's why I put this experiential learning uh here, is because I think it can link to, to what I mentioned just now, the two. The two uh perspective of mine towards the arts education. Okay, and then the last, so I I'm so-called I wrap up, I wrap up myself. So my education philosophy, um after being a so-called dancer, choreographer, a dance teacher. And after that, moving into the uh master of education, management and administration program. And now I'm in the arts and humanity education program of master degree. And then I I'm kind of like, you know, um um clear up my mind to have like um consolidated. All this year, what have I been doing? And then uh be also now alongside with the knowledge that I obtained academically, practically. And then I so-called come up with this education philosophy of myself. Integrating teach, teaching pedagogy. So we always need, we also, we we all have our own teaching method, our so-called pedagogy, pedagogy of teaching. But you need to know how can you integrate. Integrate with not only um arts arts forms. If you have another form, you have another material element that you want to integrate, then it's fine. But you can find what is there. For me, I found that arts forms for me is a good medium to integrate into my teaching pedagogy. And establishing teaching philosophy, yeah? So only when you go to all these processes, you can start to establish your teaching philosophy, yeah? So you think deeper and broad and and broader about uh about the uh teaching. About this word teaching, what it mean to you and what it can be affect that to your student. What influences it could be, what motivation you could arise for your student. All these, it could be connected to, again, the man- All these, it could be connected to again, the manage you you, how you manage your student development. It depend on which um aspect you want to develop uh your student development, yeah? Maybe learning aspect, outcome aspect, this and that, okay? You need to figure out as a teacher, this is our so-called duty or our responsibility. And then learner's central approach, I believe many theory of education, we talk about learner's central approach nowadays. So by learner's central approach, we can know uh provide students more space. Or more more time to think about uh to think about the the so-called knowledge. We don't give the knowledge to them, we not only deliver the knowledge to them. We want them to do something within the journey, they can find the knowledge. And so and after that, this has been like so-called a deeper thing in their inside their their mind or in their brain, right? So they can apply it into their life or into their learning journey. So this is so-called the the ultimate goals for me, I think. And last thing, as I mentioned just now, enthusiasm and passion is very important. So without that, uh don't even, for me, I'm sorry, very personal. For me, without enthusiasm, without passions, we don't even need to think about. Uh how can we, uh what our student can achieve, no? All the student uh outcomes, it actually go back to how how teacher lead. Or or how teacher um provide, right? So this is very personal uh perspective on my education philosophy. And then these three things that, yeah, and cognitive development. So you see, when we when we look at, when we have the so-called practical experiences. And we we have working experiences and then we so-called come up with our own perspective. And we go back to the theory to make sure, uh or not to not make sure, just double check or or just um uh make it as a reference. Is this still in line? Because sometimes we are not the so-called that hmm, we are not the expert of the education. So we cannot give some conclusion based on our experiences. So that's why we are here, we are master's degree student, we always need to do research. Every practical things or every ideal statements, we somehow can find some theory to. To support, okay? So when we look at this cognitive development and get learners in physical activities, okay? So if you if you're teaching like so-called English mathematics or or some literature uh classes. You can also try to think what physical activities that suitable in that classroom. From the material that you have, you can design something, you can create something. This is the creation process for you. And it could, so that it could tickle the student's curiosity. If student that didn't have curiosity, that didn't have motivation to learn from you. And then use more brain training games in classroom, this is for like younger age uh student, right? They're all like games, but what kind of games? It doesn't mean you just not simply give them uh games to play, just spend the time, some spending a time there. The game, it should have the objective, it should have the purpose. What you you should know, even you didn't tell the children, your student, but you should you should have that in your mind. What is the purpose for let uh for for allow the student to play that game in that specific section of class? Okay, and nurture student creativity. So I believe when you do more like not, you 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 draw some, you draw more activity. And then you can nurture them uh to develop their creativity, more cultivating their creativity in your class. And lastly, introduce students to new skills and experiences. So we introduce, we are not um, we are not just give them that so-called skill. We not hold them, we introduce to them and they need to experience and go through by themselves. Uh this is and so-called, so-called they have a strong uh so strong memory or some images. In their brain, okay? So you can also, I actually I I found these uh know these few points from from this online, not online um. Resources is quite useful and yeah, you can just find it and then you can think about it. And okay, now, this is discussions, uh no, I'm not going to ask first. Okay, I think I I I I stop here for the presentation. And then we can go into the Q and A section first. And I can come back to the discussion if I feel that is necessary, okay? Everyone still here, I finished my P P T presentation, oh my sharing.
Alright, uh thank you uh Lim uh for that sharing. Uh now let me start the Q and A session by asking. Uh while you guys are waiting, uh while while we wait for the question from the students. Uh let me uh begin by uh the first question. A a lot of your perspective just now is talking about um how to integrate. Uh how to think about arts education and integrated uh in the classroom. Um now I'm coming here as a perspective of a manager, uh as a vice uh vice uh. Principal of a school, um as a head of the head head of department in charge of probably uh allocating resources. Uh so that student teachers can can use different methods, including arts education to teach. So um in from your perspective, how can vice presidents? Uh vice principals help teachers to use uh to 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 teach better. Throughout education, uh what, do you need more money? Going for uh trips uh outside, do you need more money, more staff into teach? So uh because all the sharing that you highlighted just now, um I have to. We have to translate it into something that we can do. At the end of the day, the 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 subject is managing student development. So uh your thoughts, I'm not so sure whether you get the question.
Yeah, okay. Hmm, it can be, uh I tried to answer from two perspectives, uh from two angle. Okay, because I how, how can a vice pr- uh principal not assist? His uh her staff, no, for 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 achieve this so-called integration of the of the program or of the of the class. Um okay, there are two ways of doing, uh from what I know, some school like uh for example, now in Taiwan, right? So they have this so-called at least one full-time arts teacher in the in the in the school, at least one. And then this teacher, maybe let's say it's me, so I'm I'm a dance background, right? But before that, um yeah, I as a dance background teacher, but now I'm become a. An arts teacher in that school, I actually need to have some so-called skill or knowledge about the other arts form. So, okay, so where, where where of this knowledge come from? First, maybe I should develop my own, with my own, I go and not have more uh study or so-called things like that. But secondly, maybe we can get some resources and support from the school, yeah, they provide some maybe training program. The like uh for for maybe once a year or maybe try twice a year or maybe three times a year. So for specific teacher to to have these experiences, uh experience of the aesthetic education. So just I mentioned, but M O E, they're running this education, aesthetic education, they're actually doing um two times a month. For the for two for two-day courses for all the teacher in 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 the country. So they can go and not learn something from there. But of course, I believe we don't have that maybe in our country yet. So as a white president, I think it can be like. It can, that they can have this so-called the professional learning community first. So just like a a little bit like a brainstorming, like for you, what is drama about? And if let's say we have this issue, we want to bring into our class by any of arts form, we can choose one. Where all of us more familiar with, so that we try to find resources, no, we try to. We research by our own and then we try to do small, small things first, like like a small scale things into that, yeah. And then, yeah, this I think, I I I think for me, I I would think like that. Am I answering your question, doctor? Hey, doctor, I can't hear you, did you switch on your mind?
It's very uh muted, um uh. I'm still trying to relate it back uh to school environment, because at the end of the day. Several approaches that can be done, you either do it through school student clubs, student societies. Uh or you um allow students to go out and participate in dance competitions. Uh theater performances, um so. At present time, these are the only uh investments uh that that the the schools. Uh give, so that we can integrate arts education in uh properly.
Yeah, yeah, so um now in maybe in our country, the arts education is still more to the skills. Like if you are learning dance, you you just learn dance from dance teacher. You know how to dance, you have this flexibility, you want to learn music, you learn from piano, piano teacher, violin, violin teacher. It's just like that, but when we want to uh we want to like not deliver these approaches to a common. A common education, a normal education. So we are not doing, we are not focusing on the skill, we are focusing on the ideas. And focusing on the nature of the art form. Yeah, so a a very simple example that I mentioned just now, if you're an English teacher, we want to teach about, not moral teacher. Want to teach about respect, right? So so uh you you don't have to not really uh do a very big script, right, you don't have to, just a few script. Then the the script can be the material from a textbook, right? The material from textbook, let's say teacher teach them, you cannot do that because it's not right. But then you you make it a play in the classroom, you choose student A to become this role, student B to become that role. You actually integrate arts into your teaching material and your teaching process. And then this is the the idea very basically.
Okay, uh anyone want to ask uh Lim questions? Because I don't see any question from the chat function at the moment. If you have questions, please unmute yourself uh and then ask directly or uh type in in the chat function. Okay, there's one question coming in, uh Zhang An, are you here?
Yes, doctor.
Can you ask the question directly to Lim?
Yeah, it's my question, because ha- sometimes high school students are old. Than primary school students before I'm a Chinese uh teacher in China. I have been teaching seven years uh for high school students. But I don't know uh how to control my students and uh. And let them enjoy my class classroom. And I want to study Chinese because my major is a special older Chinese language, it's so difficult for my students.
Okay, sorry again, uh what are you teaching, what what course is there, what subject is there?
Um teacher, sorry, I can't understand, please uh speak again.
Uh what subject you are teaching in the China?
Chinese, Chinese, but it's, yeah, 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 but it's a older language in Chinese history. It's so difficult for my students.
You teach Chinese, you teach Chinese history in other language, is it one, what you mean?
Uh Chinese language, but it's so difficult, it's not a simple Chinese.
Okay.
Chinese language.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So.
Thank you.
And so you 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 your question, like use brain training games to motivate student, okay? Uh if the if there are high school students, the games should be like. Um different, no, different form for the games for for those children. Children, they they they're quite uh easily to, you know, um to to accept the games that you provide for them. Because they just want to play, they like to play. But then, if you let's say for your case, like for high school student. I think some task would be better than games. So the task it could be like, you know, you 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 need to um so-called um design. Design some task and then that task can draw out discussions. And then you can give them some, uh you you need to lead a little bit, like like lead them, like have some clue for them to think. To go further. And then because uh for me, as I understand, for a high school student, they need more challenges. Otherwise, that if they think that games is too easy for them, they think, oh, that's not suitable for me. I'm not a children anymore, I'm a adult, especially like, oh, high school student, they're always think they are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Give them more challenge and then that's why I say rather than games, maybe task would be um uh would be more suitable for them. Yeah, the task it could be like, no, uh as simple as uh as a discussion, can draw, maybe you can draw a mind map. But through the discussion, right, you give them one topic or one little topic, which you want to teach for that class, actually. And then give them some keywords, lead them to think or to discuss about. Maybe this is one of the way that I can think about for right now, for 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 this moment, yeah?
Okay, because sometimes my class are often boring, like poetry and reading are very difficult. So yes, uh sometimes I take them to play um games. Uh they are not interest interested. Your means is uh I need to uh make a design different classroom. According to different task, task based, they say the classroom.
Yeah.
Your means, okay, thank you, teacher.
Or sometimes, or maybe uh you can change the venue if you can. Change the venue instead of in the classroom, outdoor. Outdoor, it could be within the school campus or maybe some place. Let's say, uh I don't know where, like some place you can really, no, you can, you can, you can uh have them. Know that, because sometimes we just want to draw their action, uh their their interest, right? You you sometimes stay in the classroom very bored for them. Yeah, you just change a little bit the 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 way that that we're going to deliver, it it might, it might help a lot. Like some of our classes here, we are going outside, let's say for museum. And then we, after visiting, we have class there, we have a class there, yeah. And then we we draw out uh our discussion over there. Or sometime, I also heard the primary or secondary school student from uh the teacher from here, they have this so-called drama classes. At so maybe at the beach or maybe at some place, they are they are safe for the student. They're 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 uh they they hold their class over there. And then then with some games as well, some activity, or we can listen games for the uh adult learner. Maybe activity is more su- suitable for them, yeah.
Thank for, thank you for your answer.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, my camera, oh, sorry, just the before, my camera was broken, so I can't open it, sorry, doctor.
No problem, no problem.
Thank you, thank you, understand.
Hello, may I be the next one?
Okay, yeah, please.
Okay, uh I'm also a teacher, I teach my students uh L S A English, that is the exam, L S. Uh so uh what I want to teach them is not only the knowledge and the skills. Because I think that they can find knowledge and skill on the internet, they don't need me. But I want to teach them a kind of way that's uh thinking or a kind of way that to know one kind of. Uh language and know the uh value of this language and also know the uh. A beautiful things of this knowledge, but I I think it's not easy for me to guide them to to do this learning objective. A beautiful things of this knowledge, but I, I think it's not easy for me to guide them to, to do this learning objectives. Because most of the time, we just uh con- uh concentrate on the uh part of knowledge and the skills. So, uh, could you give me some, um. Some, uh, some idea or some ways that I can improve or just to, uh, to achieve this obje- uh, uh, learning objective?
Hmm, um, currently, uh, uh, many people, they are talking about, you know, the creative. The creative, um, creative teaching. So just now I mentioned about creative learning, and then also some topic about teaching creatively. So, um, I, I, like, like, for example, in my, in my campus now, we have this, uh, we have this course called Creative Teaching. So, then, um, we need to go to, you know. Before we go to practical, we need to go to all the tier B. Actually, you can find some article from there, and then they will, you know, they will let you know what is it about the creative learning. Because I can't really, like, make it clear within a few minutes here. And then, but then, uh, it, it is a long journey. Even though they implemented this so-called creative learning to the lecturer, the professor in the school. So, they will have this so-called a head of the, you know, of that project, then they will go to, uh, they'll sit into the class. And then they will see how the teacher doing, and then they get, they give, give some recommendation, you know, some, some suggestion to them. How can they teach creatively? Ob- obviously, activity is one of it. You need to, uh, for example, I have taken this class called, uh, what is that called? Qualitative, I think all of us taking a qualitative class, and then the first class that here, the lecturer. He use, uh, he, he give us some, uh, a storyline, a scenario. Like, let's say today you in this scenario, and then, and then you discuss all these issues. Actually, that issue is the so-called research question. And then we, after grouping, discussing, and then, uh, he lead us, you know, to, to use a sticky notes, right? So-called we can, like, so-called, um, play all the note at the same, at the same category. And then we come in, we come out so-called the, the, uh, the what, the. The so-called car with the.
Yes, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, you know, yeah. So sometimes discussion, if, let's say, you take, the, the teacher about English, English. Like, like you want to, uh, bring out some literature thing, like very broad one, right, a history one. Yeah, you give them some, you, you need to give them something first, that can initiate the discussion. And then give them some keywords if they cannot, and then try to, you know, develop from there, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I hope, I hope I answered the question, but I, I think it's not.
It's okay, because you give me some part that I can think about.
Because I'm still a student, though. Okay, so I saw some of the question here, okay, let me try to answer, uh, Yu Miao. Yu Miao say, yeah, oh, okay.
Uh, hello, Mister Ling.
Uh, yeah.
Hello.
Yeah, I, 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 I saw your question, I saw your question, I can answer you directly. Because, because I have this experience as well, one of my students. She really determined to study dance degree after the secondary school education, right? And almost enrolled, but the last minute, she told me, I don't want, I, I changed, I changed my mind. The reason is, it's, it's not because she, she don't want, she doesn't want anymore, it's because her parents last minute drawback. Yeah, uh, yeah, take it back, they're, they're, they promise, they want them to study like, you know, the business or the law, lawyer things, uh, courses like that. So, if you ask me any of your question, I really don't know, because we cannot control the parents, you know? We can through education, like we through education, we, we promoting arts education. But this is a very, very long journey, very long journey. It couldn't be like just a few words from teacher, then can change the mindset of the parents. It's like quite, um, quite like, you know, uh, it's, it's quite possible, it's quite impossible, yeah. So for me, what I'm doing, I'm trying to, when I doing that my, my dance classes, I'm teaching dance skill. But then sometimes I, I spend some time talking about what is it about dance, um, uh, what is good about dance education? What can you be if you're studying dance? And then, and then what is the dance world about? Because for, for the parents, maybe they think, oh, you go to study dance, you just learn the skill. You don't have the academic background, and how do you compete with this world and things like that? Yeah, because they don't, they don't know. So, uh, for me, as a, a step, despite of like how, like, you know, I, I try to deliver some message to my student. Uh, I, I remember I give them one assignment for the secondary school student. I just want them to go and research about all the dance forms, they split into few groups. One group choose maybe classical ballet, one would just Chinese dance, Malay dance, or whatever dance. And they go to do a research about the history background of this art form, this dance form, the certain dance form. And then, uh, what is the common, you know, common, um, common movement or costume for that? So I think during that process, that they can learn more. This is just one of the activity that I could think about it during last time. So I think it's not about how you're going to persuade the, the parents to, to let their, their, their children to, to go and. No learn dancing, this, this kind of thing, yeah, it's a long way. That's why, that's why here they are doing aesthetic education, they are not educating students or children. They are actually educating the society, the parents as well, yeah, so it's a long journey, what I can say.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Ling.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I saw Shaties. Shaties, oh, I, I remember Shaties will take a same course previously. So what leads teacher with no formal arts background to integrate the arts in the classroom effectively? I think, uh, kind of a similar question to Doctor Doria, which I answered, Dora, Dora just now, like. Yeah, lead teacher with no, what, what lead teacher with no formal art background? Hmm. Passion and enthusiasm on how the faith you have in the, you, in the arts education. How do you think, uh, issue, so, so, sorry? Hmm, when you believe the arts education have that power. To change something or to maybe give something to your student. And then this is the first initial, so-called, this is the first lead to the teacher with no formal background. You can do anything, you can know any, uh, can find any resources, you know, from, uh, from, from, from what you have. And try to do that, because we are not going to do like a, a great dance work or great, uh, drama play. Just as I mentioned just now, it's just a very simple thing, even when you watch a T V, you know how that work. Yeah, just try to transform into your classroom, things like that, okay? Uh, I how to integrate traditional culture into arts education? Make more young people love and inhabit traditional culture. I think this is so-called similar with just now I mentioned about the language, language thing, okay? When we want to integrate something with arts education or into arts education. We need to find a connection between those two forms. The connection comes first, and then you can try to think about the branches, how you reach out, and then what you need. And how to evaluate or give feedback on student performance in art course. Depending on the student's skill or have a test or some other method of evaluations. This is very difficult for, uh, eve- to evaluate the skills or have a test, but of course, we have that. Even when we are studying, you know, in a university. They will depend, they will evaluate the student, you know, the, the skill from what they saw. For example, a very common one, today you turn one circle, he turned three circle, who get the higher marks? Who get a better result? Yeah, today your leg only kick until here, but the other one kick until here, the side leg, and then who is the better one? So the evaluation comes out like that. But now, we don't, um, we don't talk about evaluation, more people now they are talking about portfolio. The learning portfolio of the student. So they evaluate the student in the art classes based on the, uh, the portfolio. So the student, they need to, you know, produce the portfolio every week. Like what they learned, and how they learned, what issues or what problem they have. So, yeah, so they, they are doing this so-called portfolio of the student for their learning process. It's quite, uh, common here nowadays. And then the last one, what studies can be implemented to engage parents, family and broader community in supporting, appreciating the value of arts education? Hmm. Conferences, talk, seminars, exhibitions, yeah, all these can be, okay? So.
So, any, uh, no, any last questions, uh, the last person that asked the question is Liu Jing. Um, why? Yes? Who's talking?
Uh, I'm Liu Jing, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I think you have answered the question, right, Lim?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, okay, hmm. If there's no other question, now, um, I'm, I hope you guys, uh, learn something from this session. Um, the first component being, uh, how do you, what is arts education in general? Um, for the Malaysians in the team, you might benefit slightly, because, uh. We do not talk about it much, um, in terms of, um, education beyond, uh. Arithmetic skills, uh, language skills, uh, scientific skills. So, uh, that's one component that I hope everyone can pick up. The second component, uh, I hope everyone picks up is. Uh, from the perspective of a teacher, uh, as you guys have asked a lot of questions. Uh, and I didn't know that you have a lot, there's a lot of teachers in the, in the classroom, uh, who are teaching in China. So, um, it all begins, uh, by thinking of, uh, the, the thinking of. Uh, integrating arts education in, in your classroom through your activities. Uh, there's a lot of questions asking, uh, Lim, uh, how to teach, uh, in more interesting ways. Um, he may not be ans- uh, able to answer most of the questions, but then. At least, uh, you, you understand that, okay, it takes some form of trial and error. And as Lim mentioned just now, there are four different groups, visual, uh, music, theater, uh, dance. So try, uh, trial and error is one way of going, going, going through it. Um, now moving on, uh, something that I'm still looking at, uh, probably we might need to do more reading after this. Um, management investment in arts, arts education. Uh, are we encouraging our students to do so, um, at least for the Malaysia context? Uh, are we, um, encouraging our students to express themselves? Is there, is there opportunity for them to do so? Um, are we giving investment in terms of supporting them in their activities? What are the infrastructure that we have, uh, we can do, uh, to support the students? Uh, Lim came from, I can't remember the name of your school, uh, it's a private, uh, Chinese private school in Malaysia.
Chinese, Chinese independent school.
Uh, independent school, uh, Kandong. Yes.
Would you have to?
Who knew, yes, so, um, public, at, at the private sector, the investment might be a bit different. As compared to, uh, the public sector, um, so, uh. And it also comes back to the fundamental question of, uh, are we, uh, encouraging. Uh, our students to, to venture into different forms of, uh, art. Okay, um, one unanswered question that, that I figure up coming from this session. Uh, it's actually, uh, whether we are ready to accept. As, as education as a mainstream form of, uh, education. Uh, the conversation these days is a lot about, we need to make sure that, uh, there's enough students going into STEM fields. Uh, it's fifteen percent currently, uh, in Malaysia, the, the statistics, uh, down from twenty-two percent. So we, in this kind of environment, uh, definitely the focus would be narrowed, um. Management might not want to look at arts education, uh, as a form of investment. So how do we, uh, go, go around that? Um, think about, at the end of the day, uh, help supporting our students, uh, in, in their, uh, interests. For example, so, uh, Lim, uh, we have taken a lot of the time, one and a half hours to be exact.
Sorry, I also taken your all of the time.
So, um, please join me in thanking Lim for, for his contribution, uh, to the session. Uh, now, um, I hope you guys can go back to the slide that I shared with everyone last week. Uh, the study session with externals. Um, Lim's, uh, approach, uh, it's actually, um. Part of. How we encourage our students to, uh, to start learning how to learn. So there's various theory, theory of intellectual and ethical development. Um, where, uh, just now there was a question, how do you teach respect in class? Uh, you can't really, uh, simply give a set of slides and say this is how. What respect is, it has to be, uh, exhibited, it has to be experienced. Um, so, um, art, arts education is one way of doing it. Um, another theory that you might want to look at is, how do you expose and get students to understand? Uh, what values are, especially if they're young. Um, so there's different, uh, age, uh, considerations. Uh, where, when can they understand what, uh, trust is, for example, what respect is? Um, if you want them to understand from a younger age, um, it has to be by doing. Which is why, uh, Lim, uh, emphasized on experiential learning just now, the concept of experiential learning. Now, uh, other than that, go and have a look at the slides. Uh, but what I want to also highlight is, um, probably something that Lim didn't highlight, uh, which I can highlight now. Um, at the end of the day, uh, we want to focus on student well-being. Uh, how well the students are in terms of physical health, mental health. Social connections with other, uh, others in the community, uh, their value system. So, um, when you are poor in one aspect, for example, when you are not well, physically not well. You can't perform well in terms of your academic achievement, you can relate to others, you can make friends. So that is why, um. One component, uh, of motivation, why I bring Lim into the picture is that. Please, it might be good for us to rethink, uh, our approach in terms of emphasizing, uh, academic studies. Um, arts is a good form for us to express ourselves, one of you guys actually mentioned, uh, arts, uh, as a form of expression. Uh, to, to everyone, so, um, thank you guys once again. Uh, let me, uh, close off by giving, for the next two, two, three minutes, uh, Lim, any last words? Uh, from you.
Um, okay, well, I've, I've attached two questions, uh, discussion, you know, you can, in the chat box, you can think about it. Actually, there, there was in my, in my P P T, but I just transformed it here. So, just, 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 uh, just a simple question for you to think about, and then. And, yeah, thank you for all the passions and also the participation here. And I believe it's, uh, really has some, uh, has some so-called challenges. For us to reach to the speech that what I mentioned just now, but then, education sometimes somehow is like that. We have these, uh, so-called objective or goals, or our belief to reach on, that, that is our motivation. And then from there, we try to work ourselves toward it, yeah. So, yeah, I, I, but when I prepare for these P P Ts, like, you know, I also have very clear image of clear. Clear idea of about our Malaysia current situation for the education, aesthetic, aesthetic, our arts education is not included. I think I think our arts education is not included. Yeah, this is also one of the, one of the issues that I keep thinking and I would like to do more research about that. Yeah, so, but then we can just treat it as uh looking, looking into it from another angle or perspective. Like all the perspective from overseas or from other people, it just a reference for us. In the end, how we integrate ourselves? Integrate those to fit our environment, to fit our education uh system. Now, this is a thing that as a teacher we need to think, because here also have got, I have some student from China, right? It's also different system again, yeah. So we get this idea, this theory, this concept, and then how we integrate within our boundaries. Yeah, this is more important than everything, yeah, okay? So this is my last word to everyone and I hope you guys enjoy your study, enjoy your time with Doctor Doria. And then, yeah, keep working hard for our research as a master student. Thank you.
All right, uh with that, thank you, uh Lim, please share your slides with uh with me uh later. Uh, and guys, uh you know what's going to, what's happening after this, uh when the recording is ready. Uh, I will post it on the e-learning function. Uh, don't forget about your reflection, it costs ten months uh for your assessment. Lim give you two questions just now to think about, probably that is the two question that you can answer in your reflection. Uh, and uh that's it, guys, uh thank you so much uh for your time today. Lim, thank you uh for spending your afternoon with us.
Thank you.
Have a good rest. Uh, and for the rest of you, I'll see you again next week. Uh, next week, we'll we'll be talking to Isa. Isa is my first-year student. Um, what what makes me bring Isa into the classroom is that she uh worked in uh early childhood education center before kindergarten. Before she came to campus, uh as a first-year student, a a different view of how to teach children, toddlers especially. So that is a a component that we will learn next week, so I'll see everyone next week. Uh, and with that, I'm going to stop the recording.